Thank you, everybody. So I have another town that I'm a little bit ahead on. Uh, but we're going down the same road and that's Wakefield. I, we did the second draft last night. And I, I thought that it went well. What I did was I went section by section and I identified uh, changes in each section and issues. There's, you know, when I go through this, the first time I make a lot of decisions for you. But I always like to circle back and make sure that I did it right. So, uh, and what I did last night in Wakefield was in anticipation of the first stakeholders meeting there, which is coming up on June 27th. So that's when the second draft is all in. Um, the first, you can see a few places where I've just got placeholders in this draft, but they're not going to change. Um, and at the stakeholders meeting, I like to hand out a two-sided uh, issue sheet that says minor, major, major issues in caps, minor issues um, in lowercase. And you know, that's enough for the uninitiated to get a feel for the things we're wrestling with. And I thought maybe that would be a good thing to do tonight to walk you through this. Um, we've got, we've got so much time here in terms of uh, getting ready for a spring town meeting. I mean, it's June 4th. So uh, my thinking is that I would go to a second draft relatively quickly. We'd have one more meeting uh, roughly in the first 10 days of July. Uh, and then we'd um, wave goodbye to each other until after Labor Day. Uh, when we put a third draft together and in the fall, we would start thinking about that stakeholders meeting where we invite in people who are, um, you know, developers or lawyers in town who regularly visit your board meetings with applications. Um, other board members trying to get this thing set up with a constituency to move towards town meeting and a placement on the warrant. Paul, when would we need to get it ready for the spring warrant? What, like in my town Concord, you pretty much need to have everything ready by January 1.
Uh, well, ours would probably be, ours would be late January, early February because ours, we just had our spring town meeting, although it should have been a couple of weeks earlier. So usually it's mid-first or second week of May. So usually we have to have the warrant ready. You know, uh, because obviously we have to run this through planning board and so probably by the, we should be shooting for the end of January to have it finished and ready to, you know, uh, because we have to notice the public hearing for the planning board and we want to do that a month before.
Well, like I said, that gives us um, an ungodly amount of time to keep tweaking it until we get it right. So. Alright, so if you'll share a screen with me, um. I've got this thing.
And you, you can, you should be able to share.
Okay. Hang on a second.
Yeah, I, I have the ability to share, but you should, Mark.
No, 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 let me just clean this up. I thought I had cleaned it up better than this. Alright, so. Alright. Everything but. My apologies. Alright, there we go. So, um, again, remember that everything yellow is new, black is old. Strike up means it's headed for the, the bin. And just taking this a section at a time uh, and pausing to ask or answer questions as we go through the, through the 10 sections that we've got to work our way through. So a couple of thoughts on this. The, the purpose clause seems appropriately short. Um, just Monday, I got a word from the court, the appeals court that yet another of my clients who this time developed a, a permitted a 85,000 square foot R and D in Watertown. Uh, were faced with plaintiffs who did not qualify for standing. And this purpose clause was discussed uh, a lot in the case. Desmond, who wrote it for the appeals court, Justice Desmond, said that the purpose clause is not a source of protected interests, which is great. Because you know, I, I keep whittling it back. I don't want somebody to use these bullets here to say they've got standing beyond what the zoning statute recognizes as a zoning related injury. So zoning related injuries under, under ordinary case law would be traffic noise, lights, litter, parking. Um, those are the kinds of things that you can complain of and get standing. The, there's a couple of uh, cases to talk about view. If this, for example, were to bullet view as something protected, uh, you, you can be sure that somebody will eventually find it and claim that they have standing if their view is impeded. Uh, privacy is another example of a uh, locally created interest for standing. A density is another one. Um, and the last one is diminutive property value. Uh, the courts have held that you only get to complain about lost value if it's tethered to another zoning related injury. So the traffic sucks, my house is worth less money. There's a lot of noise, my house is worth less money. And the, the more I, I've, I've had about 20 cases now in the past two and a half years. Uh, by the way, we, we won the case on Monday. Um, and it's just getting really tiring to see people creating what, what amounts to a sham argument that they're injured enough for standing. So I, I would, I, I'm now urging towns and I urged Wakefield last night to, you know, whittle this. This is perfectly workable, but um, I, I think, I think eventually I'm going to advise towns to put just what you have in this first paragraph. Uh, the purpose of the bylaws to promote public health, safety, convenience and the general welfare of the folks who live in Norton, period, move on. That, nobody's going to search that for standing. And um, so that's, that's probably the main issue with regard to section one. I don't think I whittled it back in terms of um, what you had, what you had before.
Mark, if I could just ask.
Sure.
Yes, there were actually two additional bullet items in the first draft of this section.
I think I pulled them out.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure if that was intentional because we didn't talk about it, but if it was in your judgment, then I'm fine with it.
You know, the, the, the other major case that, probably the most important case of the last five years was decided in February and it's a case from Rochester where uh, I think I've told you about it. The uh, was an asphalt plant that wanted to expand and they got sued by their neighbors, including a competitor asphalt plant. And there were three appeals. All three of them were unsuccessful. Further appeals up the ladder on all three, also unsuccessful. And the uh, developer who had gotten the permits sued them for basically frivolous complaints. And that's always been a dangerous thing to do. But the developer was um, persistent and won. And the case went all the way up to the Supreme Judicial Court. And the Supreme Judicial Court pretty much eviscerated the anti-slap statute for people who just make it up. And when they file a complaint, you know, land use law is all about X, my experts versus your experts. It's not about what you think unless you're a surprise expert sitting on the board. Um, I mean, just, just the other night I was in Sudbury and they were ignoring their traffic engineer and I said, why are we paying for peer review? You hired perfectly good experts, great experts to help you out. And the chairman of the board said, well, oh, we're experts too. And I was like, okay, I can't wait to cross-examine you on the witness stand. You will be very quickly persuaded that you're not an expert at all. But, and that's, that's kind of where the game falls apart when people think they have special expertise and they know. So this is all of a, of a, of a consistent theme. Um, your amendment section is a little bit local and, but it looks effective to me, so I didn't change it. And um, so this is, you know, this is, as I've said consistently, this is the handshake of the bylaw, just gets you going. Um, I think you wanted, somebody had suggested that we, we merge application and interpretation. So you can see I just took a sentence out of the one that got deleted and added it to the backend of interpretation in yellow. And I added the authority, which is chapter 48 itself in article 89, that's the home rule amendment to the constitution. And that's pretty much all there is in section one that's new and noteworthy. Um, if I don't hear a question, I'm going to go on to section two. Has the zoning map been amended since 99?
Yes, yeah, a, a, a number of times.
Um, so that. What's online right now?
Oh, prob- uh, I think there was an amendment in 23. We've made amendments uh, every few years.
Have you put them on the map?
So.
Yeah, we have a marijuana overlay.
Yes, we do. Yeah, that's one thing, Mark. I've noticed um, under the overlay, um, I don't, marijuana's not there.
Okay.
The marijuana overlay district.
Okay. I'm going to make my notes quickly in the text and then just save it again. Is that what it's called marijuana or do you call it cannabis?
I'm pretty sure marijuana. One second, I have it up.
Yeah, the mod.
And this, is, is there an electronic copy? It's not in the bylaw that's online.
Oh, it should be.
The map is online. It may not be incorporated into the bylaw document.
Yeah, that's fine. I can get the map.
I, I will check on that because that was adopted in 2020.
Yeah, if you go to the zoning, it is a hash mark within the zoning.
What does that mean?
Um, so because it might cross um, multiple districts.
Oh, on the map?
It is, yeah, it is a hash mark within the, the overlay.
Yeah, many towns don't put their overlay districts on the map because it gets really crowded. I mean, you've got two that would crowd a lot, flood plain and water resource. I, I haven't, I haven't seen a map of the wetland protection overlay district, but um, like in Wakefield, for example.
There isn't.
They have five overlay districts in their own map.
Yeah, we, that we don't have a, a map of the wetland protection overlay district.
Well, we're going to have a conversation about that anyway, so we'll save it till then.
Good, okay.
There is, there is a district, there's just no map of the district.
Yeah.
There are legal descriptions in the, in the um, in the bylaw.
Right.
Yeah.
But I'll check on the marijuana, Mark, and I'll, we'll get, we'll get it and get it to you.
Okay. And is that the only other overlay you know of that's been created, the mod?
Yes.
Okay.
I got a question real quick. Does our historic district count as an overlay?
No, that's a separate statute. 40C is for historic districts. Now, this is 40A.
Yeah, and we, we don't regulate historic district through the zoning bylaw.
Alright, so. That's pretty short and sweet. You don't have anything that goes very deep on determination of boundaries, but I suppose that it would you know, do a good enough job. Uh, and then you don't have anything on split lots. What happens when a lot is split by a zoning district boundary? So it could be part residential and part business of some sort. The usual approach to that is to say that the less restricted district, that would be the business district, can encroach up to X feet into the residence district. And usually it's by special permit and it's not usually more than 50 feet. So 30 feet is common in a lot of places. I don't know if you want to put that in, it's, I can certainly add it. We can, with the time we have, we can consider it, either keep it in or throw it up.
I know that we have, so typically what we'll do on a split lot is we'll allow the, have the allowed use, go on that appropriate zoning. Um, and there is another section where it talks about if you're an industrial or commercial use of budding residential, there's uh, setback requirements there along with some buffering.
Yeah, I remember those. But this would actually allow uh, the commercial use to be partially located in the residence district because the lot is split by the district line. So it's not a, in, in the setback, you're kind of doing the exact opposite. You're, you're, you're pushing it back from the residential boundary line and you're making it into a buffer. I sup- you know, why anybody would have a split lot is a pretty good question. You know, why, why are you torturing, why are you torturing them with a split lot? Why not just put it where the boundary of the lot is?
Um, uh, well, I, I, not to go in a lot of detail about that, but for until about four or five years ago, we had a, a crayon drawn map that was not parcel specific.
Yeah.
So then we had to work with our regional planning agency to uh, create a digital map that became parcel specific. So she was using markers on the map and so forth. So, but we had a 50-year legacy of of a very generic zoning map.
Yeah, a lot of times.
I thought it was colored pencil, not crayon.
Or pencil, I'm sorry.
A lot of towns will say that the commercial districts is a setback 200 feet off of the highway. But if the lot's longer than 200 feet, you're in a residence district after that. That's a classic example of a split lot.
Yeah, we just said it's five, 400 feet and that's where that zoning goes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'll show you, I'll show you a sample and we'll, we'll plug it in here at the end of the uh, of the section.
Okay. Yeah, I think we need it. There are, I can think of at least three different lots that I have looked at in EDC and planning where it is uh, dual zoned. So I do think we need someone to address it.
And some of it's not even a clean break. Some of it's literally a small section was nicked. It's, and it's in a different zoning district and it'd be nice if we could clean that up.
Alright, so I'm into the use regulations. And if I remember correctly, uh, I can, I can, I'll pull up the table of use regulations in a second. But if I remember correctly, everybody, every, the, the, the special permit granting authority is for the most part, planning board throughout. And the ZBA's special permit power is pretty much limited to non-conformities. So you're not, you're not splitting the job. Uh, the planning board gets the gist of it. Like an interesting thing, this 10,000 square foot thing um, requires a special permit. Um, denim is a good example. Th- theirs is a little bigger, it's 25,000 square feet. But there are places on the use table where the Board of Appeals, it's a special permit granting authority. But this in denim supersedes that authority if the building's bigger than 25,000. They call it a major non-residential special permit. Um, so you, but you do have shared authority. So for example, if I wanted to put in uh, CVS, um, which, and they're getting bigger, um, and the CVS was 18,000 square feet, it would go to the Board of Appeals and it would have site plan approval from the planning board. If it was 27,000 square feet, it would go to the planning board for a major non-residential special permit. Site plan would be merged into the process and that's the way it works there. I, I don't know if that holds any interest for you. I don't know whether the Board of Appeals, you know, whi- which is typically a shared SPGA. I, I would say it's you know, you know, there's towns where it's almost the opposite in many towns, planning, sometimes don't trust their planning. I, I live in one. When I was on my planning board, we didn't give any special permits. We did site plan for uses that were, that were available as of right. But if it was a special permit, we just made a recommendation to the ZBA and they had every special permit. Winchester's another example. Canton is another example. Um, ZBA, their rules. Uh, planning board doesn't do special permits in, in Canton. So different strokes, different folks. If it ain't broke, I'm not going to fix it.
I trust my planning board.
Okay.
Granted, I'm the chair, so that's kind of cheating.
That's, that's a good reason to be chair.
Well, um, it's, it's also what we all signed up for to be kind of weird to change the rules.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. You know, I, I, when I worked in those towns, I was always really fascinated by, like when I re-cotified Winchester, I said, you know, well, it's unusual that the zoning Board of Appeals would be site plan review authority. That's usually a planning board job and they told me if I said that out loud one more time, they'd take a gun to me. So, okay, that's just their politics, that's all. I don't think it's changed. I, I think I did that 15, 18 years ago. Yeah, I don't, for all I know, it hasn't changed a bit. So the only thing I had here for accessory uses, in addition to what's in the table, is this provision, which I should probably color yellow. The, the, the general rule for interpreting these, uh, the table is contained up here in the introduction, right? So, and I'm sure you're all familiar with it. Except provided by statute or in the bylaw, nothing can be done unless it says it can be done in the table. If, if it's not mentioned in the table, then you can't do it. That's the usual approach to zoning. Um, and you would think that that would carry over to accessory uses as well as principal uses. But in the last year, the appeals court has had a couple of chances to think about that. And they've basically said what I've said here in yellow at the bottom. Uh, accessory uses are those allowed in the table. In addition, other accessory uses are allowed, provided they meet the definition of accessory use. There's the definition. And the, the, the cases, there have been two now from the appeals court via the land court. The cases say there's so many different things that could be accessory uses if they're incidental and subordinate, that it's impossible to think of them all. And therefore, um, there's a little bit more flexibility in how you treat accessory uses than principal uses. But one rule for principal uses, one rule for accessories, different rule for accessories. I don't think it's, I don't think it's a bad idea. One of the cases uh, was mine. Um, well, actually two of them are mine. Um, but my favorite one was a, a guy up in Boxford who was in his, he had like a 3,500 square foot house in his garage. He was building scale model locomotives, one eighth.
You mentioned this one before, yeah.
Yeah, so what bylaw, nobody's bylaw says hobby. Is a hobby an accessory use? I don't think anybody's really, you know, drilled down to that level. And if, and if hobbies are allowed, I mean, how many hobbies are there? You've got Alexander Calder's hobby, you've got, the, I'm going up to Maine uh, in a couple of weeks to see a basket weaver at the Portland Museum of Art who's now using his tribal skills to weave baskets that are showing up at the um, at the, the metropolitan in, in New York. So what people do for a hobby is many faceted and instead of trying to name all of them, this would allow them to be generically authorized.
When, before you scroll past that for accessory uses, it's, um, it says subordinate, incidental, subordinate to the principal use.
Yes.
Provided they're on the same lot. Um, is there a recommendation to include any kind of a numerical percentage compared to the primary use? Or is, because this place who leaves it up entirely up to the interpretation of the board making the decision.
So in Boxford, there was, that was a good example. The guy's house was 3,500 square feet and he wanted to build a 1,000 1,200 square foot accessory building to move all that off, out of his garage. You could barely walk through the garage. And you know, I, it, so it was incidental and subordinate to the principal structure and use. I don't know where I would draw the line. There's an old, there's a Hadley case.
An example being, I have a house, I want to build a garage. Garage is subordinate to the house. But the garage, especially if you put a bedroom over the top of it, could be as large or as larger as the primary residence.
Please, um, in discussing this, keep in mind that there's a difference between an accessory use and an accessory structure.
Okay, good point.
Typically, the, the accessory structure regulations appear in the dimensional section. I don't think you have any. Um, or not many, but, but they would focus more on shed sizes, shed placement. You know, what, the, does a shed need a building permit? The current state building code is 200 square feet before you need a building permit. Um, if it needs a building permit, it probably should observe the setback that's required for the principal structure. If it's under 200 square feet, it probably can be located closer to the property line, maybe five or 10 feet. Certainly no shed should appear in the front yard. So those are the kinds of accessory structure regulations you see all the time. Those accessory
Okay.
The, the locational regulations al- also can get into things like where, where can you put a trailer on the property?
Okay.
Particularly in RV.
I was conflating the dimensional accessory requirements in this one, so that's fine.
Yeah, but the bottom line is that I, I'm not a big fan of, can't be bigger than 25%. Um, I, 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 I see that frequently. The, the Hadley case was, was a story of an internet business that was taking over the house.
And our, our, our home occupations already say that we can't go over 25%
Right, right.
The total floor area. So I think that's, that's already in line for a home occupation.
Yeah, and, and in the Hadley case, it was, it was over 25% and it was rapidly approaching 49% and the court said time to get an office downtown.
And we have a ho- home occupation thing that says for whether it's in-house or in an accessory structure outside.
Yeah.
And if it's for like hobby stuff, we have home craftsman shop.
Yeah, I preserved, I, I thought you had such a unique system that I um, that I kept them in the uh, in the table.
Okay, so, sorry for getting us off track here. We can go back.
I think we should spend a second looking at the tables, so just, just hang on. I think we should spend a second looking at the tables. So just, just hang on for a second.
And then, uh, just so everyone knows, Tom doesn't have a mic. I think we've covered his question. Of course, Tom's the chair of ZBA. But, uh, we were talking about the accessory uses and structures, but his comment is, our question was, isn't this consistent with what we have, uh, now in the definitions?
Yes. I, I'd have to go back and look at the definition of accessory. Uh, structure and use.
Yeah, I think we have a definition that's not in the new set of definitions yet.
Okay, so share screen, where's the use table? There it is. So just to remind you of the use table. This may not be the latest one, because I remember getting rid of that red. But it didn't change that much. So I'll just, we're gonna talk about senior housing when we get to the section. These are the cleaned up Dover uses for the most part. And when you get to the, uh, accessory uses at the end here, there are still of them listed.
Nothing.
And a lot of, a lot of them focus on these, you know, craftsmen, professional offices, with or without employees, custom work. To be honest with you, my usual approach is to say there's only two kinds of home occupations. And there are those that have no visits to the location or very few. So no, no employees who don't live there, no pupils, no customers, no clients. That's as of right. If it has any of that stuff, one of those things, it's a special permit. But you know, when I looked back at what you had, I said, well, it, you know, it's a pretty well thought out system. So I did not put in my usual suggestion. I don't, if you wanna see my usual suggestion, I'm happy to show it to you in a separate file and you can take a look at it. Any interest?
Happy to take a look at anything, but I like, I like how we have it laid out.
Yeah, I, that, that's, you, you, you changed my mind. Now here's some things that, you know, just basically should be in there. Family daycare, small and large. This scientific number nine is in the statute. So it's in section nine of the statute. It's basically mad scientists can work out of their home. And adult daycare is my revenge on long, long departed Judge Kilborn of the land court, who told me that my client in Westwood, who wanted to do this in a big old post road home, taking people in the morning and have them picked up by their adult children at night, was a warehouse and it wasn't educational. And I said, well, we're gonna get around that somehow, Judge. So there you have it for the 45th time. Since he did that. And I, you know, so the, these are the things that are listed. Now this, this, this doesn't mean that this is all you can do. Like what we just went over, you can do plenty of other things as well. You just have to, you just have to show that they're, that they meet, that they meet the definition of accessory.
Mark, can I just make a suggestion from a readability standpoint?
Sure.
Should accessory uses come directly after principal uses, meaning before the use tables? I just feel like that tiny little clause is gonna get lost.
So say again what you want me to do.
So you wanna move 3.3.1 to right after, in, within the use table area, basically?
No, I wanna make 3.3, 3.2, and then make 3.2, 3.3.
Okay. I can do that.
If it pleases the rest of the panel. It just seems more logical to me that way, but I could be convinced otherwise.
Yeah, start out with the little ones and work your way to the big ones.
Kind of. Well, also you've got principal and then you've got an opposing viewpoint, so you might as well put it next to it.
Okay.
No objections from me.
Sounds good. I got a question about accessory uses though, in a, in a way.
Um, yeah.
As far as like a home occupation, something that sort of faded out, but how do we make like a neighborhood store, like a small little neighborhood shop that's not a full retail site? But not necessarily agriculture.
Well, it's still a principal use.
Yeah, it's, it's gotta be in a commercial, a village commercial or others own.
Or non-conforming in a residential.
Yeah.
So is, is there a way to limit the size of a store? Like, it can, could we permit just a, like a small, like again, like a neighborhood store that would be like under 1,000 square feet or 2,000 square, like very small? Or just some snacks and stuff in the neighborhood, but?
I'm, I'm trying to remember the town that I did this in. It might be Stoughton. Um, but they have what's called a uh, the, the gradation is neighborhood. Um, you know, more or less district and then general. And the size ratio for a neighborhood business, uh, for a store, it would be under 2,500, 3,000 square feet. So it's truly, you know, a mom and pop thing that you can walk to. Um, a slightly bigger limitation would be 10,000 square feet and that would be something that serves an area of town. Um, and then the bigger stores would, uh, you know, have no limit. Uh, although I have written limits for big boxes back in the days when everybody hated big boxes. Uh, I think one town put a limitation of 60,000 square feet on a big box. So you can do that, but it, but it's, you, you, if you're citified, that makes a lot more sense, right? Cause you don't wanna be, um, you want a neighborhood in Quincy to have something you can walk to and get milk, eggs with the stroller. It, no parking really exists. So you have to keep the size of it down. And I, you know, I, I, I questioned whether or not, I mean, there are probably neighborhoods in Norton where you would wanna do that, but.
Well, in, it, where I live, we used to have two stores within walking distance in my street, but they're now non-conforming. So nobody can pick up like the neighborhood store, even if they wanted to.
Yeah, the only, the, the area where we now require it is in the Village Center Core with a first floor retail. We don't have a specific size limit. Although we do say that you can do residential on the first floor, but it has to be on the backside of it. So it would, it would limit the square footage. But it, it's, I, I think we wanna be mindful of being overly prescriptive and S- Steve, I hope I'm not miscategorizing it. And if we're able to provide flexibility, because you know, I'm with you that I wanna see more top of the shop housing like you do. Um, you know, we, uh, but otherwise, uh, you know, what we've had, and, and, and some parts of, of Norton is residential or commercial uses that were in areas that we've zoned residential. So they were non-conforming. So when they closed, and if they went beyond two years, uh, being closed, then they lost that right. And some have.
Like, uh, like I'm sort of wondering if there's like the same as the home occupation, where if it was combined with a residential lot, that it would be limited to not greater than 25% of the, the, the building? That sort of limitation?
You have to be careful though. Like in, I live in West Concord and it's a separate and discreet business area in my town. The downtown is very historic and it's controlled by three landlords. It's kind of like Nantucket in that way. But West Concord's a free for all. So when I was on the planning board, maybe 15, 12 years ago, we had a whole West Concord planning effort. And the business people participated. And I, I think the limitation on a store in West Concord might be 4,000 square feet. And that kind of, if you're successful, that's an impediment. There have been people that have been very successful and the 4,000 gets in the way. Um, you know, and it, probably the best example of success is the liquor store. Um, but there have been others. Deborah Gourmet, uh, which is a, you know, alternative, um, food store approaches the, the same size. So there's a, there's a fine line between character and, and, and frustrating the success of the business people.
Well, like for instance, in my neighborhood, most of the lots are around five, 10, 15,000 square feet max. So most stores wouldn't really be able to exceed 5,000 square feet anyways. I don't think most would get beyond a couple thousand square feet if they were in my neighborhood at, at that point, but.
Yeah, I, I think you'd be, you can certainly, you can certainly define them and limit them just by putting a cap on the size of the business.
Okay.
Um, I, I'll dig out, I ca- I think it's Stoughton. I'll dig out the, uh, neighborhood business. Um, gradations and show you at least the definitions so that you can see.
So, so ta- going back to the accessory use or building, Tom has, uh, brought up what our code does say right now, uh, the, in the definition section, which is a use or so accessory use or building is a use or a freestanding building customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal permitted use or building located on the same lot as the principal permitted user or building and not prohibited by, uh, that particular section.
That's the use table.
You should have.
Yeah, I'm sorry, by the use table, right?
You should have two definitions. It's one for accessory use and one for accessory structure. So we'll, we'll break that out.
If it's.
And then.
Sorry.
Like you.
Sorry.
So I, I don't, I don't see any, when I look in the dimensional section here, which is where I would find typically accessory structure rules, it's, it's, it's dry. You don't have any. And I don't know how big an issue it is. I mean, how, you know, how close your neighbor puts the shed to, to the shared property line is oftentimes an issue.
Well, uh, accessory structures are dictated, they're currently covered in, um, the dimensions table in, uh, section six. I think it's 6.2.
Let me look at that.
Yeah, there are setbacks there for accessory structures. Typically about 10 feet from the rear and side, I believe.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't take them out. So I, I cleaned up the, the, uh, dimensional table and I've sent it to you. So you'll still see them in there.
And hey, I was correct according to Tom and Tom would know, so.
Does it really break it out into accessory structures?
By zoning, by zoning district, then by the particular type of setback. It's more permissive than the primary structure, but.
Well, I see minimum side yard for accessory building in feet. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then minimum rear yard. Yeah, those are the two that apply to the accessory structures. Okay. Do you need more? I mean, accessory structures would include fences. I don't, uh, did I see a corner clearance regulation? You know what I mean by that?
I don't recall seeing one.
I didn't see one. I don't remember it. I just did this last week, so. I can send you a sample corner clearance. So corner clearance just basically says that any fence that comes to a point of, of, where two roads have an intersection, can't be higher than, I think it's three feet. So that traffic is.
Sightlines.
Yeah, the sightlines.
That would be helpful for that family on Mansfield Ave.
The ones that got hit by the car?
No, there's somebody that had to go to ZBA and we had no regs on it. Um, neighbors put up a fence and it ruined the sightline from their driveway.
Yeah, you also, I mean, like I, when I leave my neighborhood now, the people at the corner um, have planted arborvitae's and they're drooping out onto the road. And I've got a stop sign 150 feet down the road to my left. And I've gotta really get out beyond it to peek to see whether a car's coming uh, with the branches hanging like that. So you wanna make it clear that a, a fence and a, and a hedge are not any different in terms of impeding vision.
So it sounds like maybe that corner clearance would be something helpful within our zoning bylaws based on what, uh, Tom is putting in the chat.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll pass that sample along. Um, when I get into the dimensional stuff, I've got this lot shape factor calculation. How's that working for you?
Uh.
Lot of math.
The engineers have to do the math, not us.
Yeah.
Who does it? The building commissioner?
I'll redo the sketch at least. How's that?
Oh.
The handmade sketch is, is driving me crazy.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just a placeholder. But I'm not gonna do the sketch.
No, I said I'll do it. Cause the one that's in our current bylaws is literally hand drawn.
Well, I understand what you're trying to do here. You're trying to make sure that people don't grim save every last piece of land. And, and, and you end up with weird shaped lots. But, I mean, is it? It, it, what is the general take on this? People like it? They don't like it? I mean, I, in, in my town, we have a picture. It's, you know, you, you have to hold 80% of your frontage to the building front line. So if the frontage is 100 feet, no part of the lot can be less than 80 feet wide in, before you get to the building front line. And then in the back, if you're gonna try to grab rat tails, some, some will work if they're like almost right triangles. But if it's too pointy a triangle, like a dunce's cap, you can't count any of the land in the triangle. And it, and that's all we say. You can't do that.
I'm not opposed to reimagining it. Um, yeah. I don't know how much of a burden the shape factor is to an applicant. I don't know if, Paul, we have a couple of, uh, this isn't a condign question, but more of the, our usual local suspects from a, does this shape factor make sense? Is it a challenge when you're putting together a project? Or would you prefer something like X?
I mean, I, I would love to just see an alternative to this.
Okay, that's very concrete. It works.
I'm in here. I, I, I feel like the lot shape factor is being abused most for subdivisions. That's where I see the most lots retroactively from like the last 40 years of development that I wonder like, why was this shaped that way? So I definitely like to see some stricter rules about that kind of lot design.
I'll show you just so you get a feel for it. But I'll, but I'll definitely pass it along too. Um, so here's. So here's, here's what Concord does. So this, there's a series of pictures here. This is for lot width. This is for lot width. And the little triangles, right? So lot width basically says, it's a different drawing. That you have to hold 80% of the frontage requirement. To the building front line, hundred, just for simplicity, 100 foot. Frontage requirement means your lot has to hold 80 feet to the building front line. That takes care of the front. Nothing can be irregular. And then once you get to the back. You're holding the 80 feet. Uh, on, with the lot frontage. If you've got pretty close to a right angle. Um, then you can count that shaded areas used in calculation. If you've got a dunce's cap, you can't, you, you can't use that. So these rat tails that go off into the woods looking for more area don't count. And your lot wouldn't have the requisite area because one other drawing. Now, there's a frontage exception for. Lots that are, uh, on cul-de-sacs, I think. That's, that's, that's worked for. We don't have irregularly shaped lots as a result of that. So I'll, I'll send that to you and you can take a look at that. All right, so. I think that. In terms of other missing pieces here for accessory structures. Um, if, I mean, the setbacks is really the most important thing. You've already got the things that don't count for building height, like the cupolas and things like that. I mean, when I went through the dimensional section, it was. I, I tried to make it a little bit more sensible. So there's a couple of things to talk about multiple buildings in these districts. I put them together. Um, otherwise it was just sort of hopscotching around all over the place. And then you've got the, the dry land requirement here. Wetlands and waterways. The table will go right, right there.
I, I got a question real quick.
Shoot.
Uh, the multiple building section, so.
Yeah.
In, in a, in the residential district, that you can't put more than one building on a single property?
I would imagine that it's, it's basically, um. Subject to different provisions. In the bylaw, for example, you have a. Open space or a cluster. So the question is, can I do a condo? Um, I, I would like to see that loosened up so that you could do that.
I, I was thinking sort of specifically like agricultural or recreational or educational buildings. Where like a campus style might require more than one building on the same property?
Well, in, in the case of educational buildings, um, it's Dover amendment, so you can pretty much get away with that. In the case of agricultural, the courts have ruled that a house is, uh, is, is, you know, uh, uh, always in a. A feature that accompanies a farm or many times accompanies a farm. So it's not unusual and it's certainly lawful to have a house on a farm. I, I'm doing a, a, um. Sixty-one A. Uh, purchase for a client up in Newberry. It's 10.5 acres. There's a house. They never divided it. So when, when you do sixty-one A, you gotta know what's agricultural and what's the house. When, when the guy submitted his application, he said it's all agricultural. If you go on Google Maps. And you. Look at the house, there's 40 chickens in the driveway. So, oh, you know, we, we've got a, we, but we still have to divide the house out. And put it on its own acre to satisfy sixty-one A. Which is probably pretty common.
So like, can, can a farm put like a bed and breakfast? On the same property and have a home occupation on it? All at the same time?
It, so if you look at Westport, Massachusetts's regulations, Westport's down. Uh, near Little Compton. In Rhode Island. It's the first town in Massachusetts on the south coast. They have a, a heavy emphasis on. Uh, agri, agribusiness, agritourism. Uh, and they've got definitions for all that. Uh, and you know, it's, Westport Winery is there. They've got music on Friday and Saturday. Um, there's a couple of other businesses that also cater to that kind of. Farm to table stuff. You can go as far as you want. Uh, but you, you should probably put a, a definition in place as to how far, because some people will just go too far.
Sure.
You know, if you're doing 60 weddings a summer, that's. A little bit over the top.
Fair, but as long as we're not prohibitive, I wouldn't mind making sure we, we, it's possible within regulations.
Well, I'll send you a copy of Westport's. Uh, agri. Dash regulations.
Okay.
I think there's only three and you can see. Uh, and, and you know, and then if you Google, uh, some of the places that. Uh, are in Westport, you'll, you'll see how big some of them have gotten. But hey, I'm, who's, you know, farmers need all the help they can get, right?
Absolutely, sure.
I think, you know, just don't get Cowboy Bob coming in for six gun demonstrations like he did in Dunstable.
It's just reminding me of the office, so.
A beef farm?
Yeah, exactly.
All right, so there's not much changed here in the dimensional stuff. This section.
Mark, can you go back to four point six?
Four point six.
Yeah, there's. There's two clauses, four, six, four and four, six, five. That I don't think belong here. I think these should be moved over to the cluster development. They're not. Dimensional or lot modification. Specific.
So.
Both of four, six, four and four, six, five came from the cluster develop, the original cluster development, right?
What about four, six, three? That's gotta go too, right?
Well, I'm okay with that because it is, it addresses at least the subject. Of the section, lot area modification. So I'm okay if it's duplicated, but I don't think four, six, four, so four, six, five are applicable here.
Okay, I can see moving four, six, five over. I have to confess that I don't understand. Um, four, six, four. Is that a freestanding invitation without a lot of fanfare to do a townhouse? Or a row house?
That was a clause that was specifically within. The cluster subdivision.
The townhouse thing?
Yeah. So I don't know if that is only applicable if they are building town or row houses within a cluster development. So if. Um, somebody remind me on the corner of Oak and 123, how many units was that? Was that four or was that five? That we approved?
Three, I think.
I was in only three. It's either three or four.
The one that's tearing down the old fruit stand that's about to fall apart on its own.
Yeah.
I wanna say three. I'll give myself 70% sure on that.
Okay, for some reason I was thinking it was a four because I think they bumped it up by one. Because I think it's a.
So I can only do.
I could be wrong.
I can only do, uh, a townhouse or row house structure. In a cluster is what you're telling me.
I don't know, that's.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where that specific was coming from.
I mean, the, the cluster has a lot of rules surrounding it, so that would work, but, but if this is a freestanding invitation to do townhouse. I don't think it's in the use table.
Yeah, I, I did a quick. I did a quick look and I couldn't find. Townhouses or row houses addressed anywhere else except within the cluster subdivision section.
Okay. So I'll go back and look at that to see how that's. Supposed to fit because otherwise it just appears here.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, can I go to five?
Yeah.
So, you know, anytime we do a. Public session where people are just coming up to speed, this is all new and it's. About. The most important thing in the bylaw for people. Who wanna add on to their houses. Or knock them down and rebuild them. So we spend a lot of time going through this.
Yep.
We've been through it, so.
My only comment that I had at the time was I'd like Nick Guy of Brady, the building commissioner to weigh in and I'm not sure he has.
Okay. Well, you know, this is probably something that appears in. You know, probably sixty-five to seventy-five bylaws. Across the Commonwealth and I, the last guy that couldn't figure it out was in Oak Bluffs and. That was 20 years ago. So nobody's calling me up and saying. You're a bum. I think I've simplified it to the point where it works pretty good. I don't, I, I don't like to overcomplicate it with things like FAR limitations. So you, it's all just.
What about lot shape factor? I'm kidding, joking. Now, we can make sure Nick has reviewed it.
Okay.
Um, I, I, I'll, I'll make sure.
I'm gonna defer to him on most of it.
When he's ready, he can just call me.
Yeah.
Just give him my cell phone number.
And I know, oh, Tom, I guess is still not able to talk, but this is something ZBA looks at a lot or non-conforming. Uh, so.
We do have a lot of them.
Yeah.
Everybody does. All right, so a couple of things here I've. Framed out in non-con, in, 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 in parking and loading. What did I say here? Oh. Yeah, I mean, what you're telling me is that there's a hard cap on expanding a non-conforming. It says building or land, use of building or land. I don't know. Remember the, the lesson from the section we just went by is. That there's non-conforming uses, there's non-conforming structures. You can have a conforming use and a non-conforming structure. You can have. A non-conforming use in a conforming structure, or they can both be non-conforming. But there's different rules in terms of how you play that game moving forward for expansion. I don't even know what this is intended to address and why is it in the parking section? Maybe expanded, okay. And the number of occupants or employees located therein may be increased by not more than 25%? What's the purpose of that? What if somebody has a really good idea and it could be doubled? And it wouldn't hurt anybody?
Yeah, I, I think that's. That's real restrictive.
I mean, I would just delete.
Maybe just a, a way to. It may be an overcorrection, but, uh, okay, you have a non-conforming, you can't make it worse. We put a number to it.
But it's in parking.
Yeah. I'm not gonna try and recreate, re, re-address their logic, but in case. In the. Yeah. I know I, I know my grandparents' house had a parking driveway that was on an easement with their neighbor and it caused all sorts of problems, so. Didn't cause any problems when his brother would live next door, but once he sold it, once he died, it caused all sorts of problems. So I mean, maybe it's kind of the. I don't know.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make this. Red. Cause it bothers me and we'll figure it out. We got nine months to figure it out. I, it's this part, if you just put a period there. You, we could move it back to non-conformities, even though such building or land will thereby become non-conforming or more non-conforming. As regards parking required by the, the section.
I mean, shouldn't we move this under the non-conforming?
Well, it's falling out as regards the provision of parking.
Right, no, I understand, but it. It seems like a logical place would still be, I, I don't like that. Uh, but I, it, it would seem like I would not miss that if it's in, if I'm looking for non-conforming provisions, putting it all in one place. Is helpful, especially for the guy who always misses that and would step on the first landmine.
Well, there are towns that say in the non-conforming section, non-conforming parking. And there's, you know, which is appropriate, right? Because it's another type of non-conformity. So I don't have a problem with moving it back to non-conforming.
Yeah, I think non-conforming makes more sense because this is sort of saying to disregard the parking requirements in a way.
So five point five does address. Non-conforming, single and two family and it used to state. You couldn't increase it by more than 25% and Mark increased that to 100%. So we, if we leave it as is, we've got a conflict between. Five point five and six one two.
Well, see, I don't know that this is ever going to apply to a single family. A lawful use of building or land existing at the time. So, I mean, if this is applying to a single family. They would probably be, they'd probably be lawful, there, there's no doubt about that. Even though such building or land will thereby become non-conforming. Or more non-conforming. I, I think it's, that sentence is probably just indicating that it became non-conforming with regard to parking. It couldn't go up by more than 25%. So single family, what's the single family parking requirement? It's two spaces. So this, uh, this strikes me as being directed towards something other than single family.
Okay, fair enough. I mean, they're talking about employees and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well. We flagged it, moving along. So this is what you have. There's a parking table. I, I, I made, um. I made everything into a table. Uh, I have, I, I've sent it along. I can dig it out. But I now have made a table of residential and a table of non-residential. Parking requirements. The table of residential parking requirements is kind of weird. Uh, because it talks about parking for elder. Elder occupancy buildings funded by the government? Good God, that stopped in the Reagan administration.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So I, I'll go, I'll go to the parking schedule momentarily. I didn't, I didn't flag it and put it up. Let me do that now.
I like the naming convention. Old, 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 yeah.
Well, I'm not seeing it. I'll get it later. Well, I'm not seeing it, I'll get it later. All right, so let me get back to the share here. All right, um, but those are Smithsonian in vintage. So they probably just looking, if, if you see things like that, three asterisks, um, it's just a way I remember that I have to come back and find the right cross-reference. Well, you had something here that I didn't like. Special permits for reduced requirements. If you can reduce the parking lot by cutting out some of the number of required spaces, the Board of Appeals may grant a special permit for a period of, for a period not to exceed three years. That's kind of tough to finance most of the time. Cause the bank's putting up the money and they don't know whether or not the parking is gonna have to be expanded and it may have an impact on the building and so it's you know, I, I'm, I'm of the, of the belief that if you're going to reduce the parking, you probably should have a parking study done when you do the first permit, so that you don't have to backfill later by making the first effort to gas. Just, just do a parking analysis.
Yeah, we generally do that in the first permit at the planning board if we need to.
Can I take out the, for a period not to exceed three years?
That's what I was gonna say, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. With the National Weather Service moved their facility into Norton from Taun. But yeah, they were, they were like, we have a whole bunch of machines and machines don't need a parking spot. So they showed they could put them in if they needed to, and we said, leave, leave the space alone. Less impervious.
I'm a big fan, I'm on there twice a day. So driveways. I, I prefer special permit to variance here. Variance has to be due to soil condition, shape, topography. Five hundred feet is not shape, it's size. So put it on, put it on special permit, no harm, no foul is the test for special permit, not hardship. So I think that's where I I think I was satisfied that you, your parking provision, yeah. So this six one seven is something that I would have put at the end, but you already had it. If it could be demonstrated that the land, you know, for parking is available, but it's not needed, you can get a special permit. Now, question is, do you want to broaden this and say what I usually say, which is any parking requirement can be, uh, waived by special permit. You have to make a finding that it's not gonna cause detriment, but it's business friendly to say any parking requirement, any loading requirement can be waived by special permit.
So, so Mark, uh, uh, um, and I'm still trying to get back into the groove with Norton, but if it's in front of the planning board, if, let's say it's a site plan or special permit.
Yep.
They have the ability to grant waivers to reduce parking.
Not unless you say that.
I think our bylaw, I thought we added something a few years ago. But I might, I guess where I'm going with this is if, if a project is with planning board, does it make sense that any sort of waiver we would try to encourage staying there as opposed to?
Yes.
Um, you know, we've, people have had to do this in the past where they're going through planning board, we discover they need a waiver, then they have to go to ZBA as well, and it holds everything up and.
Yeah, well, it should be one-stop shopping. So if the use just requires site plan approval at the planning board, well, everything's being done at the planning board anyway, so the planning board ought to be able to give a separate special permit for a waiver. So if you needed to waive, ju- just, I don't, I, I, you know, I don't even think I got this right. I think it should just say the planning board. Because the planning board's got so much authority on these issues, the ZBA doesn't really even get involved. So I don't think the planning board in the court of special permit or site plan approval proceeding may grant a special permit to vary the requirements of the sign section if it can be demonstrated that a modification will not result in substantial detriment. So normally that's what I would put at the end of parking too, but you, you had a homegrown thing there and I left it. I, I would much, I, I guess my advice would be to take this and move it up to parking as well. Any regulation in section six point one can be varied by special permit, not by variance. So the ZBA never gets involved. It's one-stop shopping, they're already there for a special permit or site plan approval or both. So this is gonna be very extensively reviewed. Why not let them have freedom of design here? And I think I added the same thing at the end of lighting. Special permit for modifications, this is lighting. And I think I added it at the end of landscaping.
That's been something I've been, you know, thinking about for a number of years that if it's with planning board, you know, if we're talking about a waiver, it just seems fair to every, everybody, including ZBA that that the planning board just handle it.
Yeah.
But I remember, Tom, you'll probably remember with Blue Star a few years ago with phase one, you guys had to review, I, it was maybe the, a common driveway waiver or something, but it specifically did not allow, it was specifically not stated that the board had that authority and they had to go to ZBA.
Yep.
And it's just.
They had to look at that too, I remember we did.
Yeah, they did, they had to issue a variance.
So I, I, I would.
Correcting that.
I, I would take this, this is, I just copied and pasted this at the end of every section and corrected signs to say lighting, to say landscaping. Um, but I think I would go back to parking and I would take out that section that talks about you're only granting a waiver for the reduction in the number of spaces. I mean, what if I don't want to plant the required number of landscaping features within the parking lot? Or what if I don't want to separate the parking from my neighbor's property by a planted buffer, because there's an extensive existing vegetation there? You're not foreseeing those kinds of differentiations that exist between one property A and property B. And you can adjust all of them by just putting this for parking. I, 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 like I said, I don't think the Board of Appeals has any role to play because they don't do special permits and they don't do site plan approval. So I, I can just fix all that in three seconds.
That work. I'm also confused as to why we would need to issue a special permit.
You can't waive a bylaw. You can waive a subdivision regulation because the subdivision statute provides eighty, eighty-one R gives the planning board power to waive. But that's, that's not something that appears in the zoning act. And it's not something that can be done without a bylaw.
I feel like we haven't been possibly doing things correctly.
Yeah.
I, I don't think we've been issuing special permits for waivers.
And, and I'm sure you get tempted by waiver requests all the time.
Yeah.
I think they've all been under special permits.
You, if you say that the board can waive regulations in the bylaw, you can waive regulations by special permit. But that, that's a land court case from a long time ago, Judge. Uh, yeah, in fact, Judge Koschan said in a case, I, I remember the name of the case, it was Aloha something, it was a Hawaiian thing. And he said that it's not possible to waive substantive requirements, you know, dimensional requirements in a site plan approval without first granting a special permit. That's an old case, but it's still in my book, if I, if I remember correctly.
I think in most cases, there've been permits attached, there've been special permits attached.
Yeah.
So.
But, but town council has advised us that if the bo, planning board does not have a specific authority to grant a waiver, they can't. And then it, then it would have to go to ZBA.
Genius. So now we're gonna take them up on that. And here we go.
Can I get concurrence that we can, we can amend the bylaw so that all we have to do is issue the waiver within the special permit? We don't need to do another special permit on top of the original special permit.
I think I would advise against that because if somebody were to contest it, you'd end, you'd end up in a black hole. Why not? If the use requires a special permit?
Yep.
Why not, and they want to waive the lighting, the, the big one is always signs, right?
Yep.
They, they want a waiver because they want to put up internally lit signs and your district doesn't allow that. Why not just make them apply for a separate special permit to put up the internally lit signs and now you're covered.
Okay, we're gonna need to keep track of that because that's a separate vote.
Right, but not, not a problem.
Yep.
Done all the time.
That's, that's on your planning director to make sure he's up on, uh.
Yeah.
He's paying attention.
So I want to take this section which talks about signs and I want to move it back to the section that talks about parking and plunk it down here at the end like this. I'll fix it later. And take this section out up here because it just talks about the number of spaces. And I'll renumber accordingly. So now it's gonna say for parking and loading, you can ask us to vary anything by special permit. And by special permit, we can do that. I mean, I had a, uh, there, there's no worse evening out than going to the ZBA and having to listen to some sign company guy try to get five variances for signs. And then he, and then he has to argue that it's because of the soil condition, shape, the power. Can, can we go home now?
Okay, so I just want to be clear, sorry, I'm gonna beat this horse to a pulp. We've got a special permit for a warehouse that exceeds ten thousand square feet. They also need a waiver of a
Sign.
Dimension on the sign.
Yep.
We need, that needs two special permits.
Correct.
Okay.
And if you wanted to reduce the parking, you need a third one.
A third special permit, okay. It's not just a waiver within the original special permit.
Sheet on the landscaping, he need a fourth.
Okay.
It's all one ad, right? Now, the last question I had in this very nice, I'm glad you have lighting and landscaping already, but I, my last question was performance standards in or out. So I did not put them in, I, I, I have it ready to go, I just was interested in saving trees. Um, but you'll have to discuss this and tell me, because you had a couple of qualms about it when we went through it. So just talk amongst yourselves and tell me whether you want me to put it in or and maybe Paul can send me an email.
But the context here, I'm sorry.
The, the long section that I showed you on noise. Um, there's another section on, um, I think we've, the lighting you've already got. So it'd start with noise, it would go to site preparation. It would go to traffic, it would go to utility connection, it, it's the whole, we, we spent a whole meeting going through it. And it, they're basically the standards that you don't have in six one, six two, six three and six four. So for example, nothing in six one to six four talks about noise. This would be a, a, a new section on noise. Traffic, there's nothing in six one to six four. This would be a new section on traffic and pedestrian safety bicycle provision. It has the same punchline. If you, if you don't like it, ask for a special permit to waive it.
And by asking in or out, they would not, you would delete that entire section? Or just incorporate within the document is what you're saying?
Well, I took notes when we went through it a couple of meetings ago, and so I can come back with my notes and plug it in, you know, instantaneously, but I, I didn't want to assume after that meeting that you were gung ho about it, because it was a first, it was a first run through. It was a dry, you know, it was a first run through the, a lot of material. I can put it back in, we got nine meetings more to talk about.
Nine months, not nine meetings, right?
Yeah, nine meetings too, probably.
Well, I, I don't think we have to, have you on under contract for that many.
Uh, it's never mattered before. I've been eighteen in Bridgewater, so seriously. All right, let's, not, not looking forward to that, let's keep going. So I, I just took up a few things that, you know, I just had time to do a few things here that really didn't change for us. Earth materials is seven point one. Um, these are general regular, uh, I'm sorry, these are, these are special regulations that are topic oriented here. Oh, I think I probably wanted to call your attention in the sign bylaw. You had one reference to political, I think.
I saw that.
Yeah.
Said that it took out how long it had, they had to be removed, I think.
Yes, so there's an old case from the US Supreme Court. You can regulate political signs, but you can't regulate them
Third one.
Like that.
Yeah.
You can say what the size is, but you can't ta, you can't talk about the timing of their, uh, appearance and disappearance. And it all goes back to a case from a suburb of St. Louis back uh, in the eighties, woman in question put a sign up on her front lawn, no to the Gulf War, the first Gulf War and the George Senior War. And somebody tore it down. She moved it into the yard, somebody tore it down, she put it on her wall, somebody tore it down. She moved it into her bedroom window, somebody called the police. And the ACLU defended her. And the United States Supreme Court said this is the highest form of political speech and you cannot prohibit somebody from exercising it any day of the year. You can put reasonable time, place and manner restrictions on it like, you know, it can't be bigger than six square feet, but you can't say you can't do it, because you're prohibiting the most sacred kind of speech. So these still appear in many of our bylaws and ordinances across the Commonwealth and you, you've got to go through the AG, that's your problem, and she'll strike that in a heartbeat. I know she, she probably last looked at your bylaw before nineteen eighty-four or three or two, whenever the cases, uh, Galia versus, um, Ladue. Um, and I think it's Ladue that's the city, the suburb of St. Louis. All right, so.
I've always interpreted the political sign aspect as relating to town elections and not necessarily.
Yeah, I see what you mean.
I was, I was the proud owner of a sign that just said Kennedy. I moved to Rhode Island and I put it up in Providence when I, you know, it was an all-purpose sign, not anymore, but all right, so the other thing that I did, once I get past the earth stuff here is I, yeah, okay. So you've got adult uses in the table of uses, but you don't have any rules in the text of the bylaw. And the way you regulate it now in the table is a direct regulation of the protected speech and perhaps not as much as political speech, but not far behind is freedom of speech with regard to, um, artistic, um, you know, uh, speech. Certainly, the Supreme Court has held that.
This is the Larry Flynt case, yeah.
Yeah, it, well, there's a lot of cases, um, but, but it is protected speech. And so to say no. And so to say no to protected speech is a no-no. But to say we're really just regulating the secondary effects of the speech, meaning crimes to property, crimes to person. Is not protected speech at all, and you're perfectly free to do that. So that's the purpose of these two. Major paragraphs that I've added to section seven point two point one. Which one of you is going to have to read to the town meeting when we do this because I don't do this part. I like to see. One of you go and go into that sinkhole. It never really is a bright and shining moment at town meeting. But you gotta do it. And then I added your existing regulations, thousand feet from all other zoning districts. Which means that your um industrial district better damn well be a thousand feet. From this direction, from one direction and a thousand feet in the other direction. You're in a, I think you're in a Revere problem here. Revere said that the lot. On which an adult business had to be located, had to have a two hundred foot setback from all boundaries. And it was in a swamp to begin with. And there was no lot. That met that requirement. And T and D video sued them and Revere ended up paying a half a million bucks. Now, Revere is a much more. We know popular place for adult business in Norton in all likelihood. But the rule on adult businesses, and I make it very clear here in my little note, I'm gonna leave that until the very end. There must be a reasonable opportunity for the exercise of the speech, meaning that you just didn't put an angel on the head of a pin here. You you've got a, the the lead case on reasonable opportunity is Tingsborough. Small town, ten thousand people, ten thousand acres. They left six lots in in basically an industrial district. None of the lots were currently available to rent, but you don't have to make them currently available. There just has to be a reasonable opportunity. On the other hand, in Medford. Uh, the, by the way, the the ratio in Tingsborough was like. The the number that I remember is zero point eight seven five. Percent, less than one percent of Tingsborough. Whereas in Medford, they zoned a city block which was about one point two or three percent. And they were held accountable for it. Uh, it was not a reasonable opportunity. So you really have to do some hard look. No adult use shall be located less than a thousand feet from all other zoning districts means. That it has to be centrally located in an industrial district that's at least. Two thousand plus feet wide. Two thousand, two thousand feet including this, not including the space for the damn building. If the building is fifty feet wide, it's two thousand fifty feet.
I just looked at the map and the only spot we'd have.
Yeah. So, uh, you know, somebody needs to do this. I, or you or you can rewrite. You know, a thousand feet from zoning districts. I mean, you could, you could go into schools. Residences, you don't need to say zoning district. I mean, what if the neighboring zoning district is? You know, light industrial. Who cares?
Well, just playing devil's advocate, there are residential properties in industrial zoning here.
Yeah, I'm sure. So I would say residentially owned or zoned properties, but I wouldn't say. All other zoning districts because you're gonna find out you're in violation. And I, there's no more.
Yeah, I would. Yeah, if we're, if it's adjacent to commercial. Why would we be buffering that? That's just.
I'm gonna send you T and D video to, you know, scare the living daylights out of you. I just made a note.
We also don't have a properly sized industrial zone for that. That is next to a commercial. As a border. It's all basically against residential.
Well, you also, I don't, I'm trying to remember, do you also have any, I don't, I didn't see any reference to. Tattoo parlors. Body artists.
We have body modification.
Is that in the use table?
It is.
I think we discussed that in the in one of the recent meetings.
Yeah.
Specifically.
We're gonna have to change. Some of the allowances based on what is con- what constitutes body art nowadays.
Yeah. Well, that's also protected speech, protected for the artist, protected for the bearer.
I think we all kind of agreed at the last meeting that it would be fine in the commercial district also.
Okay. Alright, so I I added, you know, very typical regulations for adult uses. Fifty foot vegeta- vegetated buffer, you gotta keep, everything's in the building, you can't have minors. There was one. It was one place. One woman got her license pulled. I think she was in Menden. And because she couldn't sell alcohol. She. Basically advertised for eighteen year olds and charged them fifteen dollars for a Coke. But she didn't lose much of her customer base. I thought that was pretty smart of her. Um, sign requirements. And then most importantly, these criminal statutes inducing or abetting delinquency of a child. These are in the statutes. If you're going to have adult uses, you have to have these as conditions of a special permit. So you can read these. These are all new. Um. You know, I suggested that you might want to put the proposed adult use establishment. With a separation from residential zoning districts, public, private school, church, blah, 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 blah. Take a look at that. That's all new. Uh marijuana establishments and treatment centers. These are just being re- renumbered and put in here, although I do think we're gonna have to talk about solar energy. With some changes.
I think.
Sorry.
Go back to I guess both of those.
Yeah.
Um, I think that this is probably one of the earlier meetings, but. If there was, um, I thought that our wireless ones needed to be looked at.
I have, um.
Yeah.
I have made some changes to it and I'll make sure that you see them in yellow.
That's fine. Now, you had said that you were just gonna drop them in there and went, well, we were thought we were gonna tweak it, but never mind.
Yeah.
I'll I'll see it when I see it.
Yeah, you'll see it in draft too.
Okay.
Uh, I was gonna ask, under marijuana establishments, do we, do we need to work on anything for any upcoming social? Uh, consumption establishments? And also under mass law, they just. I I I've noticed recently there's a an uptick on hemp derived THC products. That are still allowed on the market. They're in the liquor stores. They're not being sold through cannabis facilities. They're they're being sold not with a HCA.
Well, you're in over my head now.
I know our current one does not allow recreational use.
It's just, right.
Not the.
It's medical.
No, it it doesn't allow um. Social consumption.
Consumption.
Right.
Yeah. Which we did whenever we adopted the bylaw. Six years ago.
Yeah, twenty twenty.
Somebody, somebody suggested four years ago, somebody suggested the idea of, uh, if somebody wanted to do a. Marijuana and hot yoga studio, which I'm like, yeah, that's a natural pairing. But I don't want somebody driving after that and go driving home after it.
Right.
What I'm kind of wondering is.
Same experience.
Can a, can a restaurant now start serving? Low percentage hemp derived THC products now that it's, it's not. Regulated in Massachusetts right now. Like, can someone open up a hemp bar for hemp drinks with THC in them?
Don't know the answer.
Okay, I think as.
Considered social consumption.
That's what I would consider under for us personally. But as far as. The state law, they don't enforce it because it's technically derived from hemp, not from the cannabis plant, although in my mind, that's botanically the same plant. But the state legally considers it two separate products.
Right, and they regu- and they regulate it very differently. So hemp is regulated by, uh, you know, Department of Agriculture. Right. Whereas Cannabis Control Commission handles anything with uh, uh, with TCH.
THC.
THC, sorry.
Hemp is allowed to have up to point three percent THC. And what they do is grow a large amount of hemp and extract it and concentrate it into a, like a five percent beverage. It's a loophole.
Yeah, I I I I don't know what the. But I guess it that part of that will be regulated. By the state. But we may have to down the road. Update the bylaws to. You know, reflect that new use.
Sure. If you send me your question, my partner Jonathan routinely speaks at the Attorney General's. Marijuana symposia. That she holds around the state, so he's considered to be. An expert, which I certainly am not.
Okay, awesome.
He may not know the answer, but. He's a lot smarter on this subject than I am.
Uh, the state is working on it is, that could be the answer.
Okay, well, the state's working on, they'd still working on solar too, so that's still the answer.
I didn't say it was a good answer.
Alright, so affordable, oh, here's the bad news. This requirement here.
You told us this when you looked at it, that it was not kosher, yeah.
Yeah, there was a, I I was, I was somewhere in the, I think I was in Antarctica when the case came down because I got a call from Lawyers Weekly. Asking me to comment. Justice Rubin had it at the land court, so. But everybody knew it was illegal because there'd been an earlier case from Westwood that was very close on point. But you can still do the multifamily stuff. Um. The multifamily stuff is permissible. Um. So I left it in. I'm sure you wanted to get it to six lot subdivisions too, but. The state, it probably. You know, they're gonna have to step in here at some point and fix this or else. There's not gonna be that much inclusionary housing anymore.
Oh, I, this isn't for us, but I am concerned about that six unit threshold. It's just too low.
It won't, it won't. Even if you make it a ten unit or a twelve unit threshold, you can't do it. You can't put a subdivision on a special permit. That's the right rule.
And the only. Right, oh, no, according to the number of units, not the lots.
Yeah, oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah, lots made no sense to me, but six units is just, the numbers don't pencil out for affordability.
I I agree with you. I think Newton started.
Be higher.
Yeah.
Or higher. I I I'm trying, we're. I need to look into that to see what that's, what that sweet spot is.
Okay. I'm just making a note. Alright, so I think I also put here, um. These are special residential regulations. So here's the cluster. And. Didn't change it. Here's senior housing. Uh, this may not be in the one I sent you. I think I added it to mine a couple of days later. So senior housing is basically. Independent living, assisted living. Memory units and long-term care facilities, which is the new name for a. Uh, nursing home. And essentially, um. You know, some choices to make here in terms of minimum parcel size, although I usually say whatever's allowed in the district. For a building, because there's different kinds of senior. Facilities, there's campus style, which generally involves, you know, five to ten acre lot. And there's also shoehorned style. I have a client. Who has urban facilities in places like Worcester. Um, Tewksbury. Dartmouth. Um. And it works. And the bottom line is that. These are generally nice neighbors. They don't use town services to any great extent except. And they don't even use ambulance services to that great an extent. But there's, um, you know, these are pretty quiet places. They pay their taxes and. Um, I think the the highest number. Of people in the baby boom era. Just two weeks ago, I read is turning sixty-five this this year. So there are more people turning sixty-five this year in the baby boom than any other year. Um, and then. I just listed the overlay districts, so I guess this is my opportunity to say. When are you gonna get rid of? The wetlands district.
Yeah, we've, uh, I have to work with conservation because that. It really makes no sense. I mean, we have wetland, we have a. You know, we we we, well, we don't have a wetlands by law, but. What's the point of having a wetland district when you have, when we follow the state's Wetland Protection Act? That's the goal is to enforce that particular act, not something that's beyond it.
Well, it's even more so to close the loopholes in that act. I mean, you've got limited project exception as a loophole. There's no vernal pools in the in the state law. So the real. One of the real values of having a a general bylaw here is to close those loopholes down. You can, you can greatly expand the no touch as well. And I think I got a, I think Steve sent something around about policy and I sent him that North Andover case. That says policy doesn't cut the mustard, so. So we just leave it blank for now. I thought you had so many interesting village center core district design standards that it was worthwhile. To put those in the special district regulations, so. I.
We had help with those, so.
Yeah, I'm not gonna rewrite them.
Significant, significant amount of help with it.
Go on, they go on and on, so.
Yeah. Well, that was intentional, that we wanted that to be a very design oriented district.
The, I think the biggest takeaway from section ten. Would be the new special permit criteria, which I think, I mean, if I put. Section five and sixty-five to seventy-five, I put these in seventy-five to ninety. Bylaws and ordinances and nobody's complaining about it. But most importantly, the site plan regulations. Have been modified to require a public hearing now. Because there's going to be a direct appeal to court. So at the end of the site plan section. You'll. Um. See. The appeal provision here. Any person agreed by a decision of the planning board goes straight to a court of competent jurisdiction. Um, I should put that. So I'm, I'm, I represent Berkshire Natural Resources Council. Having a fight with their neighbors about a parking lot. The parking lot serves their crown jewel in the Southern Berkshires Preserve. We've come to an agreement. Now we have to go for site plan approval at the Board of Select. There's no provision like ten, six, sixteen, so no appeal directly to court. In the absence of that, where you are right now. The appeal goes to the Board of Appeals when the building permit is issued or denied. There's no building permit required for the parking lot. So. You know, everybody should have ten, six, sixteen. It sends it directly to court. But in order to have it go directly to court, the land court has ruled that you have to first have a public hearing in town. So those are the two basic changes. And then there's a couple of additions here for Dover and for reasonable accommodations. Which we've talked about briefly. So the goal, my goal is to get through a brief that I have due in two weeks at the appeals court. And then turn my attention. To finishing up your second draft. Do you want to meet sometime in the first? Ten days of July? To go through that, or would you, because I'm leaving on the eleventh and I won't be back till the twenty-fourth. I could do it at the end of July, but I don't want to ruin your vacation.
I'm open for whatever.
Yeah, I'm pretty wide open.
Yeah, we don't actually have planning on the. Second or the ninth, it looks like.
You do or you don't?
We do not.
The ninth, um. Yeah, the eighth or the ninth would be best for me.
I can do either of those.
Yeah, it, it works. There might be an Economic Development Commission meeting, I, I see it as a TBD on my calendar, but don't let me stop it if Monday's the better night.
Um, it looks like I could do.
All of us are saying either, so.
Yeah, I don't want to do it on the tenth because I leave the next day for Santa Fe, so. I don't know what time the flight's gonna be.
Are you okay with the ninth?
Pardon?
So Tuesday, the ninth it is?
If that's okay with you. Any objections?
Sounds like it is.
Alright, so I'm gonna put six P M.
Yeah, well, we'll hit this on calendar pretty soon, I'll, I mean, tomorrow.
Then we'll take a break till after Labor Day.
Well, this team won't though, because we're. Because I think it's next week, we're set to, we're, we're hoping to meet with you all to talk about. The MBTA requirement. Uh, you should have it on your calendar. For the twelfth, June twelfth at six.
Let me enjoy at least a couple of days away from, uh, thinking about things.
Well, we just figured this was, as this group was already here, and this is going to be at fall, it has to be at fall town meeting.
Oh, yeah.
This is a, this is a, an important group to help us. Get that MBTA requirement right. And, uh, get it to a successful. Town meeting in the fall, we, we don't want to be one of the ten groups now on the state's, uh, naughty list. And, you know, you all have a lot to offer, and this would be, uh. You know, this will be, it's different from what Mark's doing, but. It's, it's very needed.
We'll just copy what Middleboro did, go from there, just kidding.
No, no, no.
What'd they do?
We'll not do anything.
Tell the state to shove it somewhere.
Oh, well.
In, in figurative terms.
Yeah, my, my partner's town council in Chelmsford. And he watched, he didn't have anything to do with it, he, he watched as they rezoned the three-story apartment buildings. MBTA for four-story apartment buildings, knowing that nobody would knock down a three-story building. That was in the Globe article, I thought it was amazingly creative on the part of the municipality trying to avoid the law. But not very good in terms of result.
Well, but the state is very often has said, okay, guys, that doesn't mean you actually have to build it. But, yeah, e- even when we're, 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 we don't have that many vacant acres, like a lot of towns don't have it either. But where we're selecting it, we think makes a lot of sense, you know, because of, because we have sewer. It's, you know.
The, there's a lot of low-hanging fruit, I, I'm doing, I'm doing a two hundred and thirty-three unit forty R in Grafton. Right next to the train station, which is also that been designated as MBTA, so. You know, you can.
Yeah.
You can still play by the old rules and it's relatively easy, but. I, I like the law, but if it's just gonna get abused, maybe they should rethink it.
I, I wish they had done some very different things with it, I think the intent is good, just. A lot of the practicalities of it are really problematic. But we're stuck with it, we're going to, we're going to meet it and we're, you know. I, i- if it's a, you know, whatever we're putting out there, it's, it's going to be standards that we can accept. And if a project comes along, so. In fact, I just also applied for a grant, assuming we get our MBTA regs passed. Uh, we're, we're, I've put in for a grant to, uh, keep our consultant, who's, which is Serpide. To do design standards for the MBTA standard, uh, MBTA requirement. Figured that'll make it more palatable, and if, if it's in place, we want to make sure we've got better standards. Better design standards to have a more acceptable project and get, and get more public amenities out of it, hopefully.
Though there's a, a little-known catch of design standards for forty R projects. That Bill Rail, you know Bill Rail up in Boston?
Yep.
So he, he has, he has about ten of them that he can send to you. And because so many of these MBTA projects are gonna look like forty R projects, they're. I, I think I have about five or six on my computer, I can send them to you.
I, I'll ask Bill.
Yep.
Yeah, we were.
It's gonna be a fun next couple of town meetings. Hooray.
Hey, and we're also gonna be putting sewer proposal on Elm Street in the fall too, so. Be in the spotlight.
Well, we once had a Warren article here in Concord to leash cats, so let me know when you get there. Outdoor cats.
Okay, that's, that's one I've never heard of.
Well, I, the, the journal Nature, uh, had an article a couple of five years ago. That the average house cat kills a couple of hundred birds a year. So I think that was the genesis.
You know what, we're, we're, we're seeing a proliferation of rabbits everywhere, and I wonder if it's because more people leave their cats indoors. Like my wife and I, we, they don't, our cat doesn't go out, you just don't see cats outside much anymore.
My neighbor used to call our cat OC, outdoor cat. And he would sit on their stoop, talking to the ICs that they had, the indoor cats.
Fun, fun.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'll get the invites.
Turn into a pumpkin, everybody, so, uh.
Yeah.
Alright, we'll see you, uh, after the fourth of July, so enjoy.
Thank you.
Everyone, take care, have a great rest of the week, everyone.
You too.
Have a good night, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.